Was to safely resume in-person learning for all Scarborough students. Our staff continue to collaborate and prepare for fully in-person learning in September, with the overall health, safety, and well-being of our school community first and foremost in our minds. Diane and I really want to walk through kind of the highlights of this plan, and then, and then open it up for discussion as part of the workshop format. And then also, I'm really appreciative of April reaching out to board members too, to, to, to give us a list of questions ahead of time. That was really helpful. So there's also a frequently asked questions document, a lot of questions that parents have been asking to are similar. So I think that was really helpful for us to also be able to anticipate and answer some of those questions as part of this. The first part of the plan. So our primary goal is, as stated, is to get all of our students back in classrooms full-time. The first part of that is following the main federal recommendation by the CDC, as well as the main CDC, and that's a universal masking requirement. So all students, staff, and visitors to Scarborough Public School buildings will be required to wear a mask while indoors. This requirement's consistent with main CDC and federal CDC guidance. Due to the circulating and highly contagious Delta variant, CDC recommends universal indoor masking by all students, staff, teachers, and visitors to K-12 schools, regardless of vaccination status. Returning all students safely to fully in-person instructions is our number one priority. So that's the, um, the first part of our reopening plan with respect to COVID. There's also a lot of things in our facilities as we, as we prepare. Necessary equipment, materials, supplies for supporting health and safety guidelines. We'll continue with signage in all common areas and classrooms, reminding students and staff of health and safety routines, wearing masks, maintaining physical distance when possible, washing and sanitizing hands frequently. The HVAC in all buildings. Todd's, he's really adjusted to optimize incoming airflow. Appa air filtration units have been provided to every occupied space and all units have had new filters installed over the summer. All water fountains have been replaced or converted to being bottle filling stations. That's going to be completed by early fall. Plans, there's some adjustments to our cafeteria usage. So K-5 and middle school will have pre-ordered bag lunches. High school salad bars and delis will be open as normal with extra precautions. A la carte items will also be available. Transportation, we're going to operate buses at full capacity. Per the federal CDC requirements, all students and staff will wear masks while in any district vehicles. Diane, I don't know if you're going to touch on the, the transportation survey that we put out?
Sure. Um, so as many of you may know, not just in Scarborough, but across the state and the US, actually, there is a shortage of bus drivers. And so we have been in this situation for, uh, the, this is our second school year in a row. We operated last year three bus drivers short all year. And so it was really important for us as we're returning back to school to do a transportation survey so that we can assess our ability to transport all of our students back and forth to school safely. And so, um, you can take a look at the percentages. This survey, I believe, is, is still open. I, um, these are the latest results as of this morning. But you can see this, these are the percentages of families that are looking at utilizing the school district for transportation. And as Jeff said, everyone will be masked on buses. That's a federal requirement. We will also continue to have seating charts on buses because we have to have those available for contact tracing purposes. And again, our, our why in doing this transportation survey is so that our transportation director, Sarah Redman, and her staff can take a look at the needs and assess the ability and the number of bus runs and how that will all work. So that is all still in process. But certainly, we are several bus drivers short. At this time, I think probably about six drivers short. Last year, we ran three bus drivers short. And so we really are at a bit of a critical impasse when it comes to transportation.
Yeah, and as we open, educating staff, families, and students, with, you know, not a lot of the health and safety requirements are going to be new to people. So it's, it's just reinforcing again, uh, the masking indoors and, and health and safety guidelines that we've gotten used to over the course of the last year and a little bit. And then also continuing to communicate expectations with regard to a daily health screening and self-check prior, prior to arriving on campus. With respect to responding to positive cases, so this is where there, there have been some pretty significant changes to the standard operating procedure that the main CDC requires us to do when we have a positive case in a school building. And some of those changes in the standard operating procedure are also part of some of the recommendations that we've made as part of this plan, particularly with requiring masks for all students regarding, regardless of vaccination status, as well as the pooled testing. So the goal really has been to encourage districts to require masking and then also implement pooled testing and, and limit the number of students who are in quarantine as, as close contacts. So in, in terms of who's determining when someone is a close contact, that's similar to has, how it's been in terms of consult, consultation with a main DOE and CDC. And our, our school nurses really are the, the, the central part of that process. Some of the changes in the close contacts and quarantine, Diane, I wonder if you'd, you'd kind of
Yeah.
Focus on that a little bit because that's, that's very significant and different from last year.
Sure. So I actually lifted this table off of the most recent update to the Main Center of Disease Control and Prevention Standard Operating Procedure. It is a document for how schools need to respond to positive cases. And this just actually came out this past Friday. So there are several different scenarios and you can see that they've been outlined in this table. The first is, um, anyone who is fully vaccinated would not be subject to quarantine, unless of course they were a person who also tested positive. Um, if you are a close contact and you have tested positive for COVID in the last 90 days, you are also not subject to quarantine. That was similar to last year as well. A new exception this year is pooled testing. And I know that we've put out a lot of information to the community about pooled testing. And we've done some surveying and I'll share those results with you in a few minutes. But if someone chooses, because again, pooled testing is not mandatory, it is by parent choice. If a parent chooses to enroll their child into pooled testing, which would happen once a week, and their child happens to be a close contact, their child would not be subject to classroom quarantine. They would also not be subject to quarantine of any after-school activities or athletics. The fourth exception is around the universal masking. Any schools who institute universal masking, any students who are named as close contacts are not subject to quarantine during the school day. However, they may not participate in school-related sports and activities. Again, these are regulations from the Main Center for Disease Control. These are not our local regulations or decisions. And so this is what we're going to need to follow. And depending on what things from that table we decide to approve or endorse, then situations change for students accordingly. If we do not have a universal masking mandate, students who are unvaccinated or any person who is unvaccinated would be subject to quarantine. And we know that that was a very difficult and challenging thing for both students and staff last year. And so we're excited about some of these changes because again, as Jeff said, these help us to get to our goal of keeping students in school on a more continuous basis. So in regards to the pooled testing, I'm not going to spend too much time on this because again, I know that we have pushed out a lot of education this summer to families about this. And we sent home a slide deck along with a survey. But weekly pooled testing will be available for students and staff who elect to participate in that. Some of the benefits for people participating in pooled testing include that it tests individuals before they might show any symptoms. And so as such decreases the contagion for everyone in the school community. Regular testing has been shown to slow the spread of the virus. And going and checking on a regular basis also helps to communicate confidence to the community that, that we are safe. It is another mitigation layer in addition to universal masking. That again, if you read a lot of the literature, it really does talk about multiple measures and layers of mitigation. This does provide for more continuity of in-person instruction because, um, you know, again, people participating would not be subject to quarantine. It allows those students to continue to participate in school-related sports and activities. I know that having to close down activities and sports at different points in time during the last school year really presented a lot of challenges. It really affected many of our students in terms of their mental health and, um, you know, their ability to be with their peers. And weekly testing protocols are relatively simple and minimally disruptive for students. Pooled testing is at no cost to Scarborough Public Schools. Um, and so, um, again, I just reiterated there that students who participate in pooled testing can attend school and participate in after-school activities. It limits isolation and quarantine from school. The only people who would have to either quarantine or isolate from school would be the individual who does test positive for COVID, clearly. And anyone who is unvaccinated and who does not participate in pooled testing and is deemed a close contact would have to quarantine in regards to the after-school piece. Scarborough Public Schools also, when we were budgeting our SOR3 funds this spring, we did allocate and set aside some funds to hire an individual to help us manage and run the pooled testing in the case that we might have, we might make the decision to follow through with that. And so obviously, since this plan has not been approved or endorsed, we haven't moved forward in terms of, you know, posting that position at that, at this time. Um, our pooled testing survey results. Again, we pushed out a survey because we felt really strongly that it wasn't up to us to make a decision for, for parents, whether or not they wanted their child to have the opportunity to take part in pooled testing. We felt like we needed to push that out to the community to get a sense of where the community was. And so if you take a look at these results, this is a closed survey. The survey closed last week. Um, and we got responses on behalf of 12, just over 1,200 students in our district. And 66% of those responses expressed interest overall. 16% of folks indicated that they did not want their child participating. And 17% said that they were not sure at this time. Um, and then you can also see, I have another chart where there's a breakdown by school. But certainly there is a pretty consistent trend of families that are interested in enrolling their children for pooled testing. And, and just as a reminder, um, there, they would have to opt in by a very specific form. So their answer on the survey doesn't necess, doesn't automatically place them into pooled testing. There would be some form, some formalities in that. And parents can also opt in or opt out at any time. So it is not a one-time signup. Um, and so those are things that definitely work in everyone's best interest. So it's, it's, you know, it's not a lifetime decision.
Yeah, and, and we wanted to also outline as part of the plan that, that, you know, what, what will return to classrooms full-time feel like and look like. And outside of the masks, there's a lot of things that will, will, will continue as, as they did pre-COVID. So school calendar day schedules, attendance expectations will be maintained. We're returning to full-time in-person classroom instruction. There may be some possible adjustments to start and stop times if needed, you know, due to some of the transportation constraints or, or just some logistics. School practices and policies related to learning expectations will be maintained. You know, like I said, student, staff, and visitors while indoors will be required to wear masks. There, there will be opportunities for IP 504 teams to meet via Zoom, but also meet in-person. If there are some students for medical or, or IP reasons and require remote services, that's a possibility. We're going to continue to maintain seating charts in classrooms, cafeteria and on buses for contact tracing reasons. Special services to provide faith to all students on IP and 504 plans. Meetings will continue to be facilitated remotely via the Zoom, Zoom platform. Families will have the option for in-person meetings with proper health and safety protocols followed. Will continue to, student data will continue to be collected to identify and develop specialized instruction. 504 long-term medical disability needs impacted by COVID might be present in certain students, including the potential of remote services, initial referral testing, and will continue to be scheduled neither in-person or via Zoom and Google meets platforms. With respect to response to intervention and RTI, that support will continue as designated. Students will be assessed and determination will be made initially in the fall and then on ongoing basis as needed. This process will continue, our, a team approach. So a lot of, a lot of things will resume as they, as they were, as they were proceeding pre-COVID. As far as activities and athletics, the same health, you know, physical health and safety standards apply to our, to our after-school extracurriculars and athletics. It's very, very consistent. So not, not a whole lot to add on, on that front. And as Diane mentioned, for students who, who choose to enroll in the pooled testing, if you are deemed a close contact and you're not vaccinated, you still can continue to come to school and also participate in your extracurricular and athletic programs. Also, just wanted to point out, uh, grant funding and some of the SOR funds, as we touched on a little bit in the pooled testing, a lot of the federal grant funds for this upcoming year will be spent on supplemental positions to allow for some smaller class sizes and extra support both academically and for social emotional needs as we return full-time to in-person school. So we added five teacher positions to allow for these smaller class sizes, particularly at Wentworth and the middle school. And then also additional grant funds used for a classroom, one, uh, three one-year classroom teacher positions for grades K-5, one-year high school RTI and credit recovery support specialist, one-year transition specialist position to coordinate learning continuity, one year, and then also a one-year pooled testing coordinator position if the pooled testing plan is adopted. And as, as I mentioned earlier, we do have a link to our frequently asked questions document, which was the 17 questions that were shared by board members ahead of time and, and that we've responded to in writing. So we've shared that document as well.
I'm also wondering if this might be a good time to have our district physician, Dr. Fanberg, just offer his insight about our plan. I did share our proposal with him in advance of our meeting tonight so that he could look that over carefully and offer feedback on to the group.
I'd be happy to speak, if that's okay.
Perfect. Thank you. Welcome, Dr. Fanberg.
Thank you. I'm John Fanberg. I'm a pediatrician. I'm also an adolescent medicine subspecialist at Maine Medical Center. I am the school physician for Scarborough Schools. Thank you for letting me talk. Um, I last spoke to the school board a year ago and COVID's still here. Sorry for that news. The bad news is that Delta variant is an uptick as far as positivity for infections. But the good news is we're smarter now than we were a year ago. We understand what prevents it some more extent. We have better data supporting what we're doing and vaccines exist. Vaccinations may be the most important prevention for getting serious disease from COVID. And I can't emphasize that strong enough for anybody's capable, again, the vaccine, to get the vaccine. It dramatically reduces your risk of getting the infection. And it's not perfect. You still can get the infection as smaller percent. And if you do get the infection, you're less likely to be hospitalized. And if you are hospitalized, you're less likely to die from the infection. Second most important thing I can say is masking. Masking decrease the risk of getting infection and giving infection. Those are my two most important pieces of our material as far as preventing this disease. Now, although I like to say that kids don't get COVID, we know they do. We actually pulled some data for this meeting. I sit in a practice of five different sites around the greater Portland, pediatric, greater Portland area. And I looked at just the data from July till now, which is about six weeks of data. We've had 26 kids from our practice that have turned up positive at one of our three test sites. So that doesn't include the Walgreens and other hospitals and schools and states. We've had 26 positives just among our own patients. Among those 26 kids, we have five kids who are asymptomatic. They were getting surgery or something. It's like got routine tested and they showed up positive as well. So it's out there. Now, although I'd like to say kids do just fine when they get COVID, that's also not the case. And we pulled the data for the last year from a medical center. We've had 39 patients who are pediatric ward patients who are all positive with COVID. They were mostly school age patients. Some had to be hospitalized for acute infections. Some were hospitalized for what they call multi-system inflammatory syndrome, kids, MISC. Some have been hospitalized with simple respiratory issues. All the kids that were seen with multi-system disease were healthy baseline kids. And unfortunately, we haven't had deaths at Maine Medical Center amongst kids. But we don't understand this disease for the long period of time. We know that some kids are having cardiac effects. We still don't know how long that's going to go afterwards or if it'll continue forever. We know that some people are getting affected by the long haul syndrome. And we don't understand that what does as far as mental health or fatigue or other aches and pains or things downstream for the brain. So the number one thing, as I said, is we immunize our pay, our students, patients, faculty, visitors who can actually qualify for the vaccine and might be a little bit further before we get it for kids who are younger than age 12. And then the second thing is wearing our masks, especially in the indoor setting where ventilation is decreased. So I do support this plan that's put, put forward. I especially support the mask policies that are universal among students, visitor, staff, regardless of their vaccination status. And that's consistent with the CDC's policy and recommendations as well. I'm happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you very much. Does anyone have specific questions for Dr. Fanberg? Alicia?
Dr. Fanberg, I'm wondering if, um, there, you have any difference of opinion in the age groups of, for students over 12 versus under 12, in the availability of the vaccine? More, well, that it's more available to students over 12?
It's available to students over 12. Um, I guess I'm not sure what the question is there, so.
Well, I'm, I'm just wondering if the, if you have a difference of opinion depending on the availability of the vaccine to our different student groups.
Yep. As far as how we apply, but all the policies that are being put forward, no, I think we should apply them universally across all ages at this point, regardless of vaccination status. I might be singing a different tune if we weren't seeing the prevalence of COVID increase or if everybody was actually vaccinated. I definitely would be singing a different tune if we could vaccinate all the kids under 12 as well simultaneously. Not this time.
Okay, thank you. One of the other, um, uh, concerns I've heard widely from parents is about the risks to their children because of masking. And I'm wondering, and that has included positives of medical risks and mental health risks. And, and wondering if you can talk about if there are any medical risks for wearing masking? And also sort of discuss like your risk cost benefit analysis of, of like the mental health impact to kids of, for socially for wearing masks versus their, their health risks.
Sure. Although there certainly is a perception of shortness of breath that occurs with a mask on. The reality is from a medical standpoint, you're getting the same amount of oxygen with that mask on versus off. And so that perception is misled. I don't have a medical contraindication for wearing a mask. I can say some kids are very challenged by wearing it from a behavioral standpoint with severe development delays or kids under two. And that's why there's been some latency in those two age groups or the very young age group, but not in the school age group. As far as mental health concerns with a mask, I think anxiety is a real thing. But I would worry more about anxiety getting COVID than of the mask, to be honest with you. And that's my bigger fear as far as from a health standpoint. There's also good data saying that you can train kids to wear masks that have not worn, wore masks previously. I think that was more of an addressed issue in the last year where masks were a new thing. And we at least found that kids were better putting them on than adults were and getting used to it and adapting. And the resilience came out right away with the kids, which we didn't quite see in adults the same way. I should also touch upon the mental health stuff of not being in school because that's something we've seen explode over the last year. I can't tell you how many new sets of anxiety kids I've seen, eating disorder kids I've seen, depression kids, suicidal pop kids. And they're all in your population where they're coming from. I'm an adolescent medicine specialist and we just, we have overrun our counselors with those findings as well as our services. Because that, I think we do need to normalize schools as much as we can and get kids back in school. There's a degree of isolation that's occurring in the home setting for a long periods of time with the remote approach.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Other questions? Shannon?
Dr. Fanberg, as we move forward with this plan in the future and then in the coming months, if we saw a student vaccination rate of 75% or higher, so really we're talking at the high school level, right at this point, would you recommend at that point, we can look at the ma, masking recommendations? Or do you, how, how long do you foresee?
I wish I had a crystal ball. Tell me what, tell me what the prevalence of COVID in the areas at the same time. And that'd give you better indicators. So if you tell me the prevalence of COVID went way down and immunizations were way up. And I think that's when we have to reassess things. I suspect the state CDC would be given some guidance about that point as well.
Other questions for Dr. Fanberg specifically? Okay, not seeing any. Thank you so much, Dr. Fanberg. If you don't mind sticking around for the, for the rest of our workshop, just in case something comes up. But we, we appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to turn it over now to other board questions. Questions for Diane or Jeff? General statements about the plan? Anyone want to kick us off? Nick?
Oh, sure. I'm just turning on my microphone. First, I want to thank you for a very thorough presentation. And I particularly enjoyed the, the table because a visual just helps so much when you're looking at the impact of this pooled testing and seeing where the yeses and where the noes are. And I think we have, I have much better understanding of that now after reviewing that table. My question I actually wanted to ask, and this might bring Dr. Fanberg back into the conversation, but was actually about the pooled testing. Because as I was reading about it and, and seeing it as an optional thing, which I think is, is fine. But I'm just wondering how that impacts the overall efficacy of a pooled testing strategy? Where the idea is to test a pool of people and say, okay, that classroom's all set because the, you know, they all, in my mind, I'm thinking of all these swabs in a jar, which is may or may not be what's happening. But I'm just wondering with having some people opting out of that, if that pokes holes in the efficacy of that strategy at all? Or if it still is robust with that kind of optional angle?
I was going to say, that sounds like a doctor.
Sorry, I shouldn't have. That's all right. I'm happy to answer it.
Perfect.
So it's early detection. That's what pooled testing's all about. The earlier you find this, the fewer people that are getting, they are going to get it without spreading. And as I showed you with the 26 positives in my population, five of them were asymptomatic. That's 20% of the population were roaming around without knowing they had the disease. So if we can pick those kids up earlier and separate them, the better off we are. And so, um, yes, that plays a role. Now, pooled testing's Now, pool testing is more effective if everybody participates than just some kids. But it does have some degree of effectiveness, even if some kids participate. I think the state was giving us numbers between 10 and 25 people per pool, if I recall correctly.
Yes, that's correct.
What I would imagine with a population that we have that could be vaccinated, our older students, those students, as you said in your own words, Dr. Feinberg, have less severe symptoms. And so the possibility of having someone walk around being kind of a asymptomatic carrier, I hate to say it like that, but it's probably higher, which makes this pool testing even more important.
I think that's very accurate. Remember, COVID is some layers of protection that we're trying to do. None of these is perfect. Vaccine is not perfect. The mask is not perfect. The tool testing them. But the more layers of protection we have, the overall statistical benefit of protection that we put in place.
I'm going to piggyback on Nick's question, not specifically for Dr. Famberk this time, but for administration in terms of, you know, what do we do if we have higher participation in some sections of our school or grades? I mean, what, what do we do if pool testing has a higher buy-in at one of our primary schools than our others? Like, do we have a strategy for this in terms of making sure that this is, you know, a process that is being utilized to, you know, the most benefit for our kids?
Yeah, you know, again, you know, we have been making some preliminary plans. And we met with our nurses. Gosh, I think probably a week and a half or almost two weeks ago, I'm meeting with them again tomorrow. And so, you know, we have started having some conversations about that and doing some planning about what that would look like. But there certainly isn't, we recognize that there are going to be different numbers in different places. And the value of having an extra staffer to coordinate this will be helpful. As, as you all know, we also are very fortunate to have school nurses in each of our schools. And when we first started talking about pool testing, we were really upfront in saying our school nurses, not unlike any of our other school staff last year, worked extremely hard and very diligently. And so as we planned forward for this, it really did not seem right to have it be one more thing on their plate. And so to have some dedicated staff to help with that. And we also, you know, know that no one person can do that. But having a dedicated person to, you know, be at the head of that and then, you know, to have myself, the medical team and all of us pitching in towards that effort, I think that it is worth the time that it would take in which to do so.
Well, we were really heartened by the response. 66% and that, and that was consistent K through 12, whether it was, whether it was a high school child or a second grader or first grader or fifth grader. So, and there was, you know, only a 17% who were said, no, not, not, I wouldn't, I wouldn't like to do it. So, and it's also a rolling thing. So, you know, it's not like you have to sign up by September 1st or you're out, right? So it's, it's people can be added to the, to the program as, as we were to implement it. And as Dr. Famberk was pointing out, it, you know, it's maybe not be, the efficacy may not be as high if everyone in the class were doing it. But those, if you think about it, even if two thirds of our students K to 12 were part of the pool testing program, that's two thirds of our kids who are getting, who are getting regularly tested, whether they're experiencing symptoms or not. And, and that in and of itself is a powerful mitigation measure. And as, as, as any, any school nurse or health services person in a school will say, the fewer people that you need to call as close contacts in quarantine, the easier your job is. So in the short term, I think ramping up pool testing will be definitely time intensive, and I don't want to underestimate the logistics behind it. But the whole idea is to minimize disruption, minimize the number of kids that need to go into quarantine and ultimately minimize the number of kids who either test positive for COVID or need to miss school.
Other questions? Shannon? And then Gabby.
Um, I have a few. So I'm going to ask this one because it's in regard to the full testing. If somebody is, I understand they're rolling signups, right? They can sign up anytime. But if somebody is deemed a close contact and they have not enrolled, so if we look at the chart, they may be then required to quarantine. If they asked to, to sign up at that point, they still would quarantine and then be involved with the full testing?
Right. That's correct. So for that one time, they would be subject to quarantine, right? Like, so for example, let's say it's a high school student who didn't sign up for pool testing and now they're placed into quarantine. The question has come up, well, can a parent just take their kid to Walgreens and have them tested? And would that be accepted? Again, we're having to work within the requirements of the state. And they tell us how we need to do that. And that question has been asked and the answer to that to date is no, that would not release them from that quarantine. However, the parent could certainly choose at that point to sign them up so that that would be the one and only quarantine, right? And that they wouldn't be subject to that continuous, continuously as we saw, you know, to be true for many individuals last year.
Right. When I would just add to that scenario, if it was a classroom exposure and there wasn't any direct contact because we have the universal masking requirement in place, they, they would be considered a close contact and in the community quarantine, but could still come to school.
Right.
Yes.
Go ahead, Gabby. Oh, you're on mute.
Um, so for the, in terms of contact tracing in vaccinated students not having to quarantine, how are we keeping track of like vaccination and like, do you have to send in a proof of your vaccination to the nurses or something like that?
So my understanding is that the nurses have access to student vaccinations through a statewide system called IMPACT. And so they don't necessarily have to collect that information. Um, and so we would have that on hand.
Okay.
I believe.
Almost all the practices in the state do use IMPACT for statewide registry for immunizations. It's not 100%. There's one large practice in the Portland area that doesn't, but almost all of them do.
Good information to know. Thank you.
I'm going to shift gears just for a second and then I'll come back to you, Shannon, for more questions. Um, one of the questions that was on our FAQ, and again, that's going to be a public document. We will get that posted to the website so that the public has access to that. But for discussion purposes, one of the questions that we saw a lot that was a question of my own is what happens if a student does have to quarantine this year, considering we are planning for a return to full in-person learning? And so what are the supports that are going to be in place? And, and what does that look like? What does quarantine look like for the kids?
So we have all of our principals here this evening. And so, again, that is going to look a little bit different at different schools. But they have designated staff to support students during quarantine. Again, I am going to really reiterate that if we vote to have universal masking, no student would need to quarantine during the school day. And so the only students who would not be in class would be those students who test positive. Because by having a universal test, a universal mask requirement, schools automatically are not subject to quarantine.
Correct, Jeff?
Right. And unless they were deemed a close contact from a community exposure.
Right, right. So if they had exposure outside of school, that's great.
Right. If it's a school, school-based exposure, that universal masking requirement allows them to continue to attend school in person, even if they're considered a close contact and they're not vaccinated.
This is if they are in the pool testing or just regardless?
If we have a universal masking requirement, no student, I can go back to the chart and show it to you, would be subject to quarantine during the school day.
Okay.
The pool testing changes things in regards to after-school activities and athletics at this point. And again, this is hot off the press, fresh information that we received on
Four days ago.
Late on Friday afternoon, right? And so as we have done in the last 18 months, we continue to pivot.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
And read fast.
If it would be helpful to hear some snippets from our principals, we would be happy to have them kind of just give you an overview of, of what that would look like if students were in isolation.
I'm, I mean, I'm satisfied for, for my purposes and for my question. I, I would maybe encourage the public that if they still have that question to reach out to the building principals and the building principals will have that information.
Great.
Okay, perfect. I'm going to go to Sarah and then come back to you, Shannon. Is that okay? All right. Perfect. Thank you. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thanks. I just wanted to, sorry, I don't mean to harp on this point, but it, so the quarantine is only required if you test positive. And then the length of the quarantine goes basically until you have a negative test result. Is that accurate?
So as you only have to quarantine for, if for school-related exposure, if you test positive, so you would actually be in isolation, not in quarantine, right? And the length of that is the same as it always has been. So it's a 10-day from the, you know, from the date of that exposure or positive test. And if you have a community-based exposure, then you would be in quarantine.
Gotcha. Okay. I think, I think it was the isolation quarantine that's running now.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Shannon, go ahead.
I have my slew of questions that I see we're running low on time. So I'm going to go to two, my two ones. So my first is, once again, like Sarah said, not to harp on the, the chart here, but is, did the exceptions work hand in hand? So by that, I mean, if we, if we vote on the universal masking and the pool testing and we have a vaccinated student, if they're deemed a close contact, does that mean because they're vaccinated, they are not at, not quarantined from school events and activities?
If they're vaccinated?
Yes.
Correct.
Okay.
There's no, right, there's no quarantine, no, no community quarantine, there's no extracurricular sports quarantine or exclusion. And there's, right, if you're vaccinated, you're not quarantined as a close contact.
Okay, perfect. And then my next question on, on your, the slides 15 and 16, we talked about special services. The students with the IEP plan or 504 plans, I see that they can utilize some of the services remotely. Has there been consideration given to those that have, those students with an IEP that have been deemed that the, the, the teachers and the staff have deemed that they work better remotely? Has there been any thought or consideration given to letting them continue, those students continue to do remote work? Or are they only going to be, are the services that they will be able to use, are we talking more in the way of meetings and plans?
As far as, as far as any remote learning or remote instruction, it would, it would only be if that was a modification as part of their 504 plan or IEP plan.
So if it is a modification.
If it was written into their IEP or 504.
So then we
As it would be, you know, even before COVID.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Kristin?
I had a quick question back to the exposure. Is an exposure at an athletic event considered a community exposure? Or is that considered an at-school exposure? Does it matter?
If it's a school sports team, then it's a school exposure. If it's community services or a private club team, it's community exposure.
Even if it's like playing another town, that would still be considered a school exposure?
As, as a school athletic event, I believe so, yes.
Other questions or comments? Go for it, Kristin.
Question.
You're up.
Are we back to the schools being open to all visitors?
Provided they're wearing a mask indoors.
Go for it, Shannon.
Okay, one question and one, one, one ask. My question is, we are not, I, I don't see it. So I just want to verify. We're not allowing, the plan does not call for medical opt-outs for masks. Is that correct? So parents cannot medically release their children from wearing masks at school?
Right.
Okay. And then my ask is, can we review this? If we adopt this plan, can we review this on a monthly basis at the board meeting so that we all here in the community hears where we stand? I mean, it might be that some months there are no updates, right? And it might be that some are significant. But can we, can we just pop that in as an ongoing?
Absolutely.
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and I also would imagine that as we did last year, we'll provide regular community updates in our district newsletters as well.
Yeah.
Good question. Happy to accommodate that. So good question. Other comments or questions? Okay, the workshop portion is wrapping up. This is an action item for us as part of our business meeting. I will probably ask for a motion to approve the plan as presented, which will include universal masking and acceptance of initiating a pool testing program. And so if everyone feels comfortable and feels like you've gotten your workshop questions answered, that's great. And we will have time for discussion before the vote too. Okay, so with that, I am going to go ahead and wrap up the workshop. We have two minutes to seven. So if everyone would like to take a quick break, you can feel free to do that. And at seven o'clock, we will reconvene for our business meeting.
Two minutes, all right. Stretch. Stretch. Just not used to it, man. I haven't, haven't even messed up. An extended mask break.
Hi, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and call the business meeting to order. Today is Thursday, August nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, it's a little after seven PM and we have just completed our workshops. We've already had roll call and said the pledge. Um, I do want to apologize to the community. Um, we are continuing to have technical difficulties with streaming on YouTube. That's one of those things that I, we, you know, we just held the whole workshop and of course, I don't know that we're not streaming on YouTube until the workshop is over and someone comes up to me and says, oh, by the way, that wasn't on YouTube. So my apologies to the community, um, that we lost our feed. This meeting is being recorded directly by us on Zoom, which means that we can post the meeting promptly tomorrow. Um, there won't be any waiting on that, um, like we have had in the past. So again, I apologize if you tried to watch on YouTube. For those who would like to participate in the meeting, both in person and on Zoom, those two functions clearly are working. Um, and so really it's just the ability to watch the meeting from home. Um, and like I said, we will get that up and posted on the website. So if you are watching from home, because you joined on Zoom, we will get that YouTube. Sorry, the Zoom link posted so that people can watch the workshop later, um, later on. Agenda item two point O is adjustments to the agenda. Are there any adjustments this evening?
Uh, no adjustments.
Thank you. Agenda item three point O is public comment on agenda items. I will be running public comments similar to how I have done at the last several meetings. Anyone who is signed in as an attendee on Zoom is welcome to make a public comment. You have a little blue hand feature on Zoom. You should be able to raise your hand if you would like to make a public comment. If you are in the room and you would like to make public comment, I would ask that you please form a queue. We'll just give each person their three minutes regardless of whether you're in person or on the computer. We did have several emails come in from people who were wishing to have their email read into the public record. That was a service that we set up back in the spring, um, when public meetings were, uh, in-person meetings rather were not accessible to us. At this point, um, it's something that we've talked about at policy, whether that's something that we want to continue. It is the chair's discretion, whether or not we want to take public comment via email. Because we have not restored fully our abilities to both get the meeting broadcast on YouTube and Zoom and be in person. I'm going to continue to allow, um, public comments to be read into the record via email. I will ask however, if you are signed into Zoom, and you submitted a public comment via email that you do read your own public comment rather than having Kelly Johnston read it. And with that, I will go ahead and turn public comment over to the people. I'm not seeing anyone in person and I'm not seeing any blue hands raised, um, on our meeting. So I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Kelly. Um, and, and Kelly, if you could just do two, um, I think there are four total. Five. And then I will turn it over back to YouTube, uh, back to Zoom rather, and then we'll go back to Kelly.
All right, this first one is from Alan Townsend. Dear School Board members, I'm the parent of a second and ninth grade student who attends Scarborough Public Schools. I want to express my strong opinion that everyone in schools this year should be required to wear masks. The Delta variant has become a very serious health crisis and masking will help reduce the spread and reduce the number of students who will have to miss school due to the quarantines. When the crisis debates, the mask requirement should be reconsidered, but for the time being, it should remain in place. I know some people are fed up with the mask and I think they are essential to ensure that we can have in-person school five days per week. I fear that without mask requirement, we'll have far more days when students can't attend school because they will be quarantined or worse, sick with COVID. I also strongly support regular pool COVID testing with required individual testing for those in a pool that yields a positive test. For those who are close contacts or people who test positive, quarantine and testing recommendations from public health officials should be followed. Thank you. This second one is from Elise Charello. Good morning. I'm not sure I'll be able to be there this evening, so I wanted to send this message to the board. The reason why I'm writing this is to give you my input regarding masks for children. It's my husband's and I's wish that we have the option and decision-making ability to mask our children. A junior is vaccinated and we feel there is no need for her to be masked. Additionally, for our first grader, we know, do not want her to be masked. From the data I have seen and try not to make this political, kids in private and periodical schools in urban areas went to school last year. Kids in public schools in GOP governed areas also went to school and even got to play sports mask-free and everything turned out okay. States with open schools didn't have more child COVID cases and certainly not more hospitalizations or deaths. Schools without mask mandates didn't have significantly more COVID cases. They simply put kids first. I know everyone is talking about this new variant, but I believe that it's time we talk about what the children actually need and assess the risk and damage that we are doing by not providing them full-time learning last year and insisting they wear masks this year. Thank you for your time in reading and considering this email.
Thank you. I'm actually not a host on the Zoom. So I'm going to go ahead and take public comment from in-person folks and then I will go ahead and promote a few people from the Zoom meeting.
I actually sent an email to the board. I didn't ask to have it read, but I'm going to read just a little of what I wrote. So.
I'm sorry, could you state your name, please?
Debbie Dembski.
Thank you.
And, um, one of the points that I think is really important to me is that individual families can't be effective in protecting their children alone when a child's part of community time, like being at school. So when a mask is worn, it not only helps to protect the wearer, but as importantly, it protects others. So when mask-wearing is optional, those not wearing a mask don't reciprocate protecting others. Others are put at unnecessary risk, as are the individuals themselves when not wearing a mask around others. I'm really grateful to live in Maine. I think our conservative measures have helped to keep Maine one of the safest states in the country. And the numbers around kids, I mean, for a long time, we heard kids didn't get COVID, but now you can see across the nation, you know, ICUs are filled with children. And I think what is many of the people who now have got COVID didn't ever think they wanted to be vaccinated or didn't really take it seriously. But then when it hits them or it hits their family or it hits a loved one, it really makes it real. And I know for us personally, I mean, we know people kind of down the road, not real close, who have had COVID, but we still believe it really happens. I don't know how we can say that it doesn't. And so anything we can do to protect our kids, we certainly support. And in terms of kids, um, having a hard time with masks, I think a lot of that has to do with how we model as adults and the messages that we put out. You know, I've seen kids as young as three with cancer with masks on and they, they, they deal with that. We've seen tons of our kids play sports with masks on because they're motivated. They want to play sports, so they do it. Kids don't like them, but they would rather come to school than not be able to come to school, so they're willing to wear the mask. So I think the messages that we present to kids makes a big difference in how they'll receive them. So I definitely support masking. And I don't, this is just a question that I have around pooling. I'm trying to picture all these kids sticking these things up their noses and how that doesn't somehow put virus into the environment. So that's just a, a question. I've researched and researched and can't find anything and it just, just seems weird.
Thank you. Do you want to go ahead, Dr. J?
Okay. So my name is Jennifer Jubilis and I'm a Scarborough resident. I'm a parent of a student in our schools and I'm also a pediatric infectious disease physician. By now you guys have heard from me ad nauseam, um, many letters describing science statistics. You've all heard me say that the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics strongly recommend universal masking in schools. And you've heard me describe the over four hundred children who've died nationally with COVID infection and that's with mitigation protocols in place. You've heard me describe risks of heart inflammation, renal dysfunction, intestinal dysfunction, and give statistics explaining how many children have suffered. Children are currently being hospitalized at alarming rates across the country. So I really appreciate this proposed plan for helping to keep our kids safe. Today, I'm not going to focus on statistics. Today, I'm going to explain what it's like as a pediatric ID doctor to care for a COVID patient. You will hear many, many people say that kids do not get sick with COVID and I can tell you unequivocally that this is false. Kids can and do get sick with this and my colleagues and I have seen this with our own eyes and have cared for these kids with our own hands. We wear personal protective equipment which covers our face in a large hood and which blows air through the hood. This makes it virtually impossible for our patients to see or hear us. Imagine being sick enough that you can't breathe and being surrounded by strangers with their faces covered and their speech incomprehensible. Then imagine being a child in this situation. Medicine and healing were not meant to be practiced by faceless and voiceless healers. Parents often can't be at the bedside, so after caring for their children, we call the parent to update. Some parents are angry, which I understand. They are scared and we're the easiest people to blame. Some parents shut down and become almost robotic in their dealings with their child's healthcare providers and a lot of parents cry. All want to know how this happened. All want to know what additional things we can do and all are scared. The helpless feeling of trying to comfort a parent over the phone is one I will not soon forget. Healing and medicine were not meant to occur over the phone. With the Delta variant, we are seeing more children hospitalized, both nationally and here in Maine. Schools are essential to child well-being and to keep them open and to keep children safe, I am pleading with you to follow the science, accept this plan, follow the AAP and CDC guidance and require masks in the schools. I have so many fears about this pandemic and right now my biggest fear is a rise in hospitalizations, especially among children who cannot yet be vaccinated. I would give anything never to put on the PPE again and to never have to make another phone call to a parent, but I know it's inevitable. Right now, what this plan does and what I am begging you to accept is to keep our kids in this town safe. I don't want to have to care for a friend's child or one of my child's friends. Over four hundred children have died from this and that was with masking and distancing in place. Maine children have become ill. Some have almost died. Some of these children have pre-existing medical conditions, some do not, but my question is, does that really matter? All of our children deserve to be protected. Masking in schools as per AAP and CDC guidelines and the proposed reopening plan is the way to keep schools open, keep kids learning and prevent unnecessary tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to promote Beth Darling to speak. Beth, you should be able to unmute yourself and begin your public comment.
Okay, thank you. Not used to this. I did send an email and, um, in the past, you know, when we learned that there would not be remote learning this coming year, that became very difficult to make a decision as to how we're moving forward with school for our granddaughter. I am her guardian. And I sent some emails, uh, and was, um, suggested that I reach out to you folks, the board members. Um. There were seventeen students in my granddaughter's second grade remote class at eight corners this past year and none of those families of which I'm aware opted to change to the hybrid option during that entire year. Uh, there must be other families in the district who feel the same way that we do. All of the money, efforts, technology and training that were put into making remote hybrid learning available last year will be wasted. It established a method of learning that students like our granddaughter found worked best. We experienced much fewer behavioral issues than previous years and even her teachers agreed that she did much better through remote learning. Now the rug has been pulled out from under these students, especially those with challenges like our granddaughter. Another consideration is that we're a set of grandparents with underlying health conditions caring for our grandchildren and don't want any additional viruses. I'm sure you can understand. We've already had one scare this spring and don't want another. I personally had to have monoclonal antibodies infusion because I had COVID. And if something happens to us, what will happen to them? Our Scarborough taxpaying family in particular does not appreciate the decision of what, uh, of doing away with remote learning. Other school districts are still offering the remote learning option as well. It may alleviate the school space issue that we've seen mentioned in the newspapers recently. And yes, now we're forced to look at other remote online options for which we'll have to pay extra. Some of them are five grand at least a year. Since we learned from this past year that remote, the remote method that you were offering just two months ago suits our granddaughter's learning style and her needs best. All four of our now adult children attended Scarborough schools and we were looking forward to having our granddaughter attend as well. Such a shame that this excellent school district, highly valued and highly ranked, is giving up this opportunity to meet the needs of some of their special students. Perhaps the remote learning requirement should be added to the, her IEP in order to meet her needs. No student left behind, right? And I did hear a little mention earlier, um, I don't remember exactly what was shared regarding those that are on IEPs. And can they continue remotely? If a modification was written into their plan. I think there was another question and I missed it. And if you could help me out with whatever that was that was discussed, then I greatly appreciate it. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you very much. Kelly, I'm going to go back to you, please.
Dear School Board, I'm submitting this public comment to be read at the August nineteenth School Board meeting. I respectfully ask Scarborough schools require face covering indoors for all students, teachers, staff and visitors unless they have a medical exemption. Sorry, can't see. As we begin the school year as recommended by the CDC, American Academy of Pediatrics and Maine Department of Education, face covering is an important step in limiting the spread of COVID. A face covering's purpose is to protect others from the wearer's secretions, meaning they are most effective if they are worn by all. My child wearing a face covering in a space where others are not wearing a face covering protects others from the exhale, exhale breath of my child, but does little protect my child from the exhale breath of others. I encourage the School Board to mandate face coverings indoors at Scarborough schools out of respect for everyone entering our schools. Data indicates that the Delta variant is one, more transmissible. Data indicates that the Delta variant is, one, more transmissible, two, impacting children more than previous COVID variants, and three, being transmitted by fully vaccinated people who may be asymptomatic. Universal face coverings indoors can help our kids, help keep our kids safe and in the classroom. I'm also in favor of pool testing along with masking and have signed both of my children up for pool testing during the recent survey sent to parents. I truly hope that COVID controls, including mask wearing and pool testings, will be short-lived because of COVID transmission rates in Maine and across the country decreases as the school year progresses. Until then, I am in full support of face coverings for all, regardless of vaccination status and pool testing. Thank you for your time and dedication to keeping our Scarborough school community safe. This is from Ashley McPherson. Good evening. Like many other parents in this town, I have major concerns with my child wearing a mask all day while at school. He already missed out on his entire first grade year, a whole year of not making friends, going to his favorite classes, seeing teachers and learning in a classroom. Remote learning does not work. They do not get the same time and attention as the children do at school. Young children being taught through a screen is not only extremely detrimental to their developing brains and mental health, but they are missing out on the opportunity to actually learn. You don't see the effect it has on these children, but the struggles of remote learning, seven-year-olds breaking down from the frustration of learning through a screen and not having their teacher there to help them or a friend to talk to. The end of the school year, we were told by you, it would be our own personal choice if we wanted our children to wear a mask. We should have a say in what is right for our children. There is no science that proves that masks work, but there is actual proof that our children are falling behind on their education and the mental effect it has on them. Sincerely, a concerned parent and town resident.
One more, Kelly.
Yeah, sure. This is to the Scarborough School Board. It is absolutely criminal to make a young child sit in a classroom setting with a mask on for eight hours. Who are you protecting here? Your vaccinated teachers? This makes absolutely no sense. If your concern is the health of children, how have you not considered their mental health? We have no idea what the long-term social, mental and developmental ramifications will be from the prolonged mask enforcement. But we do know that children do not contract COVID. And if there were no carriers, isn't that what the vaccine is for? My sister chose to keep her son homeschooled last year. Not out of fear of COVID. It was from the fear of the mental health, mental anguish caused by the mask. The at-home learning was an absolute joke. This is not how kids learn. Have you ever seen a child cry because they don't understand their homework? Or break down because they miss their friends? Or cry because they have to wear a mask? This is not normal, nor is it okay. You're all doing the children of Scarborough such a disservice and should be ashamed of yourselves. Children are falling behind in so many ways. You have the power to change this. Please do the responsible thing, makes masks optional. Parents should have a say in what's best for their children. This has gone too far. Sadly, deeply saddened and disappointed Lindsey McPherson.
Thank you, Kelly, for reading our public comments that were sent to us via email. I'm going to go ahead and take the people who are in person. And then I have a few more people, one more person who has their hand currently raised on Zoom.
Hi, my name's Todd Jamison. I am the parent of a third grader who will be entering Wentworth School. Actually pretty happy to be out in a public forum. First time I've worn pants in quite a while. I'm not going to get into the science and I don't really have anything prepared. I'm not going to get into the science on masks working, not working. I do have a face covering. It doesn't stop my eye rolls from the last two emails. But I am more about a plea about not just the kids that were asking to wear masks, it's about the people that are in the homes. My wife is a severely immunocompromised type one diabetic. She has an autoimmune disease. And she's now had her third vaccine. She had her booster shot earlier today. But because of her autoimmune disorders, it's not, it's not a given that the vaccine is going to work. So to not have our children protect not only themselves, but those that are in their homes, their parents, their grandparents, those who have had cancer treatments. I think all of us in this room want to do best for our child and are teaching our children compassion, to be a better person, to be a good human, to care for others. The best way for our children to care for the community is to wear a mask. And the one question I would have in this, I don't know if this gets answered now, will teachers have to be required to have vaccines? I, I know that you're probably not allowed for HIPAA reasons to tell if a teacher is vaccinated. But it would be very helpful to know what the percentage of, of teachers that will be vaccinated at the end of the year and to further on the remote learning. If for some reason we do get into a larger COVID breakout, will we be reinstituting potential remote learning for students? Thank you.
Thank you very much. And just for the public's knowledge, if you're new to attending meetings or new to making public comments, this isn't designed to be a back and forth. But if you have follow-up questions, please email the board and I will be happy to get in touch with you or put you in touch with the right person.
All right. I'm John Anderson, Five Owens Way. I am part of the town council, but I'm not here representing them. I'm, I'm here as a parent. I wanted to share tonight that I support the plan that was presented earlier in the workshop. The past year, both my kids were full-time virtual in kindergarten and second grade. This year, they're going to first and third. You know, that was the decision my wife and I made to keep them safe because I always tell my kids that my job is to make sure that they feel loved and make sure that they feel safe. And I really do feel like the plan that was put forward tonight helps me deliver on that job of keeping them safe. So I really do support the mandatory masking, the pool testing. Today, they got their teacher assignments and they're super, super excited. There were emails swirling around with parents and my son is especially super excited to see his friends that he hasn't seen for the past year. So please pass this plan as it was presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Josh Poelbrisslo, Three Grapevine Lane. I emailed a letter, but I'll read it in such a format so you don't have to read it later. My name is Josh Poelbrisslo. I'm a local health officer, paramedic and father of two children in the Scarborough School District. I am writing with concerns on my current understanding of the masking guidance being provided by the Town of Scarborough for the summer rec program and what foreshadowing that may have on the rapidly approaching 2021, 22 school year. I did not object to the changing of the mask mandate at the end of the state of emergency as all indications in the CDC data suggested, community, the state and the county were making progress in ending the pandemic. However, we have seen a significant change in the trajectory and the Delta variant is now causing a fourth wave in infections. Worse still, we are seeing changes in the impact this variant has on our most vulnerable population, children under 12 that cannot be vaccinated. We are seeing an increasing number of children testing positive for COVID-19 and reports of children being sicker than we have ever seen before. As a parent of a child under 12 with respiratory issues, this is of alarming concern. Over the past year, we have a nation, state and community have made difficult decisions and taken precautionary measures to protect the adult population when they were at the highest risk. I strongly recommend that we start doing the same for our children now that they are the ones that are unprotected. I implore you to not recommend, but require masks to be worn by all as we are starting off the school year, to once again consider the shielding and distancing that kept our children safe this past year. We are seeing these practices being implemented in our neighboring communities of South Portland and Portland, both of which have high vaccination rates similar to that of Scarborough's. Perhaps some of the measures are already in the works, soon to be reported out to concerned parents. However, if this conversation about the health and safety of the children are not, I implore you to make a swift and protective stand for our most vulnerable population. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and promote Andrea Pettit. You'll be speaking first and then Carla Emmons. I'm going to call on you next. Mrs. Pettit, you should be able to unmute and give your public comment.
Thank you. Yes, Andrea Pettit, Two Crossing Drive. I very much appreciate the time that was spent in the workshop. In the first hour, a lot of my questions were answered. And I know April, you had said that this isn't necessarily a back and forth instance, but I did feel a big hole in the conversation around what the masking process will be for recess. It seemed like the underscore was masking will be universal indoors and not a talk about what happens when they're outside. So, you know, again, not a back and forth, but that to me is just a piece of the puzzle that would be missing with this proposal. Again, thank you all for the time that you put into this and a lot of questions were answered for me. So I appreciate that.
Mrs. Emmons, you should be able to, yep.
I can. Hi, my name is Carla Emmons and I have a daughter at Wentworth. I'm asking you to support the mandate for masks for all in our schools this fall, through mid-January at least. I understand there's no patience for a hybrid schedule, but to simply return to normal practices would be irresponsible at this time. I'm, I'm one of the people who kept my child remote last year and I would love to give a shout out to her teacher and Mrs. Chin because she, my daughter had a great year and she learned a lot. She engaged with her classmates and we identified some challenges, got her extra help and saw exponential growth in her academics. Last year, Scarborough schools overall, we did pretty well, all told, except after the holiday breaks because of masking and spacing and ventilation and reducing the risks of COVID transmission. Right now, we're looking at the number of pediatric cases is rising week over week and we don't really know what the long-term side effects will be for COVID in children. We're seeing more pediatric hospitalization now than at any prior time during the pandemic and that scares me. The pandemic is not over for our unvaccinated kids and we need to do everything we can to keep them safe and healthy. The easiest step is to mandate masks for everyone in our schools. And I really hope we can continue with this plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who would like to make public comment?
Good evening. My name is Jenna, Jenna Leong. I am actually running for school board this year. I have two kids in the program in public schools, three kids altogether. So one is going to be Wentworth and one is going to Eight Corners. One thing that I am noticing that this year is that parents sending their kids are aware of their risks and have lost their patience with how schools have been running. I've heard kids in public school this year, one of which says she doesn't want to go to school because she can't talk to her friends, she can't see their faces. She can't talk to them during lunch, which is really pathetic in my opinion, since I am an educator and that's literally their only unstructured time during the day. This is just not normal. And as an educator, we tell parents to model behavior and we're modeling anxiety and poor coping skills as parents. As an educator of students with special needs as well, I'm seeing a trend in anxiety, suicidal ideation, anger. And I fear we will see more children regressing and probably requiring more IEPs if we don't open up normally, as normal as possible. One issue that we're running into here that I'm noticing is parents are not being given options. I think we should make masks optional, make a virtual option. I don't support pool testing either because, you know, private schools are successfully accommodating the needs of families right now without these testing measures. I think this will just manufacture illnesses when our kids are feeling fine and we are going to be punishing them, denying them an education because now they have to quarantine at home and not be with their friends. I think not being as normal as possible is irresponsible for us.
Thank you very much. With that, I'm not seeing anyone else on Zoom and there's no one else in person standing in line. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and close public comment for this evening. Thank you to everyone who came out and spoke. I know that that is not always the easiest thing to do and we appreciate your time as a board. Agenda item 4.0 is the superintendent's report.
All right, thank you. Covered this, obviously, the, got two things just as part of my report. The first is just some quick highlights of the workshop presentation that, that we gave at six o'clock regarding reopening. So my first slide just has a couple bullets or a few bullets, highlights of what we covered so that the key part of our plans being the universal indoor mask requirement for students and staff K to 12, as articulated by both federal and Maine CDC and Maine DOE. Reviewed some of the facilities preparations to get ready for a full return of all of our students and, and the significance of bringing all of our students back to in-person instruction. As I think everybody's articulated tonight, that's, that's our number one goal and that's certainly what's best for the health and safety and learning of our, of our, of our students and, and the overall health of our families. Reviewed updated Maine CDC standard operating procedures with regard to how we respond to any positive COVID cases in schools, which has changed some significant changes. If, if our plan is adopted by the board specifically with respect to minimizing educational disruption, minimizing close contacts and quarantine through added mitigation measures of the universal masking as well as pool testing. We talked about some of the potential for challenges for transportation in our transportation survey that, that went out. And special thanks to the community for their overwhelming response, both to the survey on pool testing, but also for transportation. We had some really good data to make sure that we're, again, minimizing disruption and getting our students back in classrooms and in schools where they belong. We shared also the results of, of pool testing and then also we'll share publicly questions that the, the board had prepared for us and, and prior to this meeting with 16 or 17 questions, a lot of questions that people have on themes of things that people have already shared tonight and at the, that I've shared with board members in preparation for this workshop and this meeting. And the second part of my report is really, you know, we've, we've been really busy, you know, getting ready for the fall. You know, and as I'm adjusting to my new position as, as your new superintendent, we were able to take two days as a leadership council for our Leadership Institute. And we had two full days, a very full agenda. You know, the first day, we were able to do some team building and, and really focus on norms of collaboration, how we were going to work together as a, as, as building leaders and then also as, as a district leadership team. Started to talk about some, actually did some, some great brainstorming around where do we start, how do we start thinking about a shared vision for Scarborough Public Schools, where we are and where we'd like to go? And then also articulated some themes around developing and implementing a professional growth model for school and district leaders and how that's going to, you know, help us engage our own staff in our own buildings and their own professional growth and development. Day two was really about the here and now. And, and I really appreciate all the thought and input that went into drafting this fall reopening plan that we were able to present. Elements of this evening at six o'clock during our workshop, there was a lot of great input from our leadership council as well as restart teams that had, that had been working throughout last year, you know, certainly prior to my arrival. We also, on that second day, tuned into an update from the DOE Commissioner on updated health and safety guidelines, the, the changes made to the standard operation or standard operating procedure document that, that we need to use when we're responding to positive COVID cases. We also had an opportunity to coordinate building level meetings, do some logistics, figure out professional development calendars across, across the district and then really start focusing on our return to school in, in terms of orienting new staff. So, so I'm going to be sharing also some of our new hires this evening for the board to approve. So we have a lot of new educators who are joining our team. We're very excited about that. So new staff orientation planning for August 25th, which the first half of the day will be district-wide for all of our new staff and then they'll be in buildings getting oriented in the afternoon. And then, and then taking some time to organize and get ready for our staff opening day. So we have two full days of, of, of staff development, August 30th and 31st. And we're just really excited to get everybody back in person on campus and get ready. and get ready to, to welcome our kids back. So it's, it's just, it's seems like just a very exciting time to be able to do that and to do that in person. So that's my update.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. Agenda item 5.0 is the chair's report. My chair's report is pretty short and sweet tonight. I just have a couple of community announcements. The first being that nomination papers are out. We have three seats up on the Scarborough Board of Education this year. Each of those seats is a three-year term. And for interested parties, nomination papers are due September 1st, 2021. My second announcement is that last night, the town council voted unanimously to approve first reading of the turf track replacement to go on the November 2nd, 2021 referendum. That is very exciting news for us as a school department. To give a one second background, the turf and track replacement has gone out to the voters once and did fail. We are in a position now that is much more dire and desperate. We have to have this pass. And so our first step last night was to get town council to approve the ballot. They do have a second reading on September 1st and I may or may not have overcommitted the school department to provide them with a little more detail. But we can work that out before September 1st. My last announcement is that MSBA, no surprises, right? My last announcement is that the MSBA virtual fall conference will be held on October 28th and 29th. I did send a email out to the board just to mark your calendars. Kelly will send out registration requests as it gets closer and when the time becomes appropriate. But I did want the board to have that on their radar. And tonight we will be choosing our delegates as an action item later on in the meeting to attend the delegate assembly at that conference. My next piece of my chair's report also relates to town council. They are preparing to send a townwide survey. It's basically a citizen satisfaction survey out in the fall. It's supposed to go out to 40, paper copies are going to go out to approximately 4,200 residences. And there's, there are also going to be an online option to fill out the survey. But the reason why this is so important is because there is a section for us as a school department to be able to gather some feedback. So what I have posted is the sample questions that were provided to us by the third-party sample company. And really what I just wanted to do was solicit a little bit of feedback from the board. I did bring this to the communications committee earlier this week. And so we have had this discussion at the committee level. But I didn't want to, because it's not an action item for us, this is more of a discussion. I didn't want to go straight to Ken Johnson, who is heading this up on the town council without having a little bit of background and discussion as a full board. And so the first three questions are just standard questions about whether or not people have a student in the district. It's actually the next set of questions that would really kind of pertain to what information we were looking for as a department of the town. These are pretty standard in terms of, you know, if you're the police department or public, public works, Community Services has a section. And basically it's just breaking down our department into its finer pieces and then asking residents for their satisfaction. And so we can, if people want to make comments on this now, we absolutely can have a little bit of discussion. I don't necessarily feel like people have to be put on the spot. But I do need to give feedback to the town council by next Friday. And so basically what I'm looking for from the board is kind of an up-down. Yes, we, we do want to have a section of this survey. And, you know, are we okay with these, with these sections being asked? There's a chance that our section is going to have to be whittled down. And so if there are any of these 65 through 74 that you don't feel like are necessarily as valuable as the rest, I think that would be good feedback for me to give to town council. And again, that it doesn't necessarily have to be right this minute, but I will be soliciting that over email again before next Friday. Does anybody have any comments or questions about the survey? Nick?
It looks pretty comprehensive overall, and I know you just mentioned actually potentially whittling it down. But there are two areas that kind of stand out to me that aren't here. One is food service and one is transportation. So I just didn't know if those would be two things that they'd want to ask anything about to the people of the town. But, I mean, it's a pretty standard scale. Looks, looks good to me as far as the layout.
Great. And the feedback that I got from Ken Johnson was not to try and wordsmith the questions themselves. That's why they've hired a third-party person or company to do this, but more just the, the general information. So to your point, we could say, we would like to know transportation satisfaction and they would then draft the question. So that's great feedback, Nick. Thank you. Does anybody else have anything else for right now? Seeing none, I will go ahead and conclude my chair's report. Agenda item 6.0 is student representative reports. I had talked to Gabby and to Yulia about continuing with their student representative reports. And obviously, since it's summer, they didn't have anything to report this month. And so we look forward to the return of that in September. Agenda item 7.0 is community, committee reports. Normally we draft up a comprehensive slide deck for each one of our committees. A lot of our committees have been meeting less frequently because of the nature of summer. But some people did prepare a slide, so I'm going to go ahead and let, it looks like Nick go first with negotiations. And then anyone else, you can just raise your hand if you would like to give an update.
Yeah. So, I mean, as you know, negotiations is usually a bit of a vague update because so much of it is confidential. But I did want to give an overall timeline on the two processes we have going on. So the first is that we met with the SCA on the bus driver's contract this past Tuesday, which was the 17th. As was commented on earlier, we do have a bus driver shortage and that certainly is part of our conversation as we work with that group to come up with their new contract. We had started earlier in the year, the Education Support Professionals Contract, which is the ESP. We have gone to mediation for that. We do have a mediator assigned. Our first meeting with the mediator will be on the 25th for five hours between 1:00 and 6:00 PM. But the goal of mediation is to have a non-binding attempt to reach accord through a neutral party, and that does take time. If we are not able to reach accord, then we would move on to fact-finding. And so I just wanted to remind everybody kind of the progression of this. So if we went on to fact-finding, the difference there is that a panel of individuals actually makes recommendations for the unsettled areas of the contract, but it's still not technically binding. But if we have to go in that direction, that's the next direction after mediation. We are all optimistic that that will not have to happen, but I did want to share it just, just to remind the community and all the board what a progression is for these different proceedings.
Thank you, Nick. Does anyone else have a committee report this evening? Shannon?
I have one for the communications team. We did meet this week to make a plan. We've started brainstorming to make a plan for the turf and track field replacement. So assuming that it is approved at the second reading, this would be an all-hands-on-deck effort to, to really, as to your point, April, to really make sure that this passes this time. So if we are brainstorming, we're working through ideas that we, we came up with as a group as to how best to initiate this conversation with the community. So if you have ideas, if anybody has ideas and wants to email us, that would be fantastic. And I think that that's, just make sure, I think that's everything. Any input and any help too, if anybody is interested in helping. It is, it's going to be a, a big project and we are working with the town and the schools. And also we would like to engage the boosters at the high school and the youth sports as well.
Great. Thank you, Shannon. That all for committee reports this evening? Okay, perfect. Agenda item 8.0 is new business. Agenda item 8.1 is the 2021-2022 school reopening plan. Do I have a motion to approve the plan as presented this evening?
So moved.
Discussion. Would like to get us started. Nick, come for it. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we, we asked a lot of questions during the workshop, so I don't want to rehash any of that. But I do just want to actually thank the board member off, I believe to my left, who brought it up by the idea of doing regular updates. I think that's going to be really important for our community. I'm so glad you brought it up because obviously this plan is a great reopening plan, but as we've seen over the course of the summer, the trajectory of this virus and its effect on our community could change at any moment. And so I think giving the community a prize through this board is really important, as well as the other channels that Diane mentioned. So thank you for this plan, but I also want to recognize, we did not rehearse this, but I wanted to recognize Shannon for asking, for bringing that up because I think it's great that we're going to keep the community regularly updated to this board.
Other comments? Kristen?
I'll echo Nick in that I love Shannon's suggestion that we get regular updates and that we're prepared to change the plan should the need be. You know, I, the masking is a tough one and I personally don't love the idea. I don't think it's an easy thing for every child to just throw a mask on. That being said, I think this universal masking, allowing all children to maintain their in-person education is just really, it's really important. And I think that can't be, you know, when we think back to where we were last year, it's hard to, it's hard to overstate how important it is for these kids to be back in person. And I think as much as I don't love the idea that kids are going to have to wear masks, I think it's probably worth it in this situation.
Thank you. Other comments? Board member comments? Shannon? And then I'll go to you, Gabby.
I think we all probably have thought about this nonstop for the last, God knows how long. But what I keep coming back to, especially at the high school level, is in addition to the health concerns, the mental health concerns we have. And if we can, if you look at the chart that Diane and Jeff so graciously provided us, if we, if we can do this, if we can maintain, if we can approve this plan as is, it looks like we don't have to take kids out of sporting events. We don't have to take them out of extracurricular activities. We don't have to quarantine as much as we did last year. And we think about the mental health impacts of last year. That's huge. And I don't think we can overstate that enough. The importance of maintaining some semblance of a normal high school and middle school and really elementary school career for our kids.
Thank you. Gabby?
Yes. Um, so I, I, at first I was like, oh, I really don't want to wear masks in school. I'm vaccinated. I haven't been wearing one all summer. That's what I, I've been going off of what is recommended. But I guess after seeing that report, I support the universal masking. I'm just sharing that what I've heard from some of my peers at the high school level, there is frustration that they will be required to wear a mask even though they are vaccinated. And me, I just hope they can all support, get, support this decision too for universal masking. But I just thought the board should be aware that there is some, at least at the high school with the vaccination, there's some talk going around, petitions, I think.
Thank you, Gabby. We always appreciate your eyes-on-the-ground perspective. Because not all of us have a high school student. Sarah, I'll go to you.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks Gabby for that. I do think that's important. And I guess, I mean, like I'm frustrated too. I think we're probably all frustrated that we're still in this position that we still have to wear masks, especially that we're vaccinated. But, you know, it's the right thing to do. It's the safest thing to do. And I guess I would just piggyback off of comment that Shannon made, which I think was actually started by one of the, the people who spoke during the public comment, which is we want to get back to as, as close to normal as we can. And to me, the plan that you guys presented is as close to normal as we can, with the exception that people will be wearing masks. But everything else seems to be pretty back to normal, which I think is great and takes care of, alleviates a lot of the concerns and the challenges that we had last year with remote and hybrids. So I'm going to be supporting this and I appreciate you guys putting it together in a very clear and concise way.
I think that leaves me with the last words here. You know, one of the things that really struck me in the spring, when we were expected to make a lot of these decisions, was not a single one of us is a public health official. You know, we were all elected to, I thought at the time, to talk about ed policy and transportation and, you know, figure out what our kids were going to be doing in terms of curriculum. And it, it was never, even in my wildest dreams, that I would be making such critical public health decisions and that people were going to be looking to school boards for answers to those questions. We have public health officials guiding us. And thank goodness, because they have been giving us guidance for well over a year that has kept our schools safe, that has kept our kids healthy. And the most important thing for us to focus on right now is getting these kids back in school five days a week in the most normal conditions that we can provide. I fully support the masking. I understand the frustration absolutely to, to everyone's point. We all are done. Nobody wants to do this anymore. But if it means that our kids can resume their activities and, and not have to be in quarantine, not have to rely on a remote option, and my kids did fully remote. And we thought that it was a great experience. But it's, my kids want to be back in school just as much. So I appreciate administration putting this together for us. I also want to thank, it's at least 30 of our school staff who are sitting here fully masked, looking at us adoringly. We appreciate your time. Thank you so much for being here this evening. We feel incredibly supported as a board. And so for that, you know, thank you very much. With that, if no one else has any other comments, I think we're ready to vote. Diane? Mrs. Giftis?
Yeah.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Ms. Bertulia?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous. We don't have a lot of agenda items left, but if everyone would like to quietly excuse themselves, no one here would blame any of you. I know that many of you have an early morning. And so I will go ahead and allow the room to kind of resettle and then I'll pick back up in another minute or so. Thank you again for your attendance tonight. Agenda item 8.2 and agenda item 8.3 are the meeting minutes of June 17th, 2021 for our workshop and our business meeting. I'm going to bundle those into one motion. Do I have a motion to approve as written? Second. Discussion? And I think we're ready to vote. Mrs. Giftis? Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
And Ms. Bertulia?
Yes.
Thank you. That's unanimous. Agenda item 8.4 is the MSBA School Board Delegate. Every year at the state school board convention, the state school board association pulls together a delegation from each of the school boards in the state of Maine who participate to pass a number of resolutions that they feel warrant state warrant state-level recognition. We do have the draft list of those resolutions. They were emailed to us. I can make sure that everyone has that. For this evening's purposes, however, we do need to just name a delegate to that assembly. I have participated as the delegate twice. It is a wildly interesting experience, to say the least. Sometimes it is hours and hours and hours long. But there's a lot of parliamentary procedure, and you get to learn a lot about the viewpoints and the different perspectives that different boards have all over the state. So I have always found it an enriching experience, not to sound like I'm totally going to geek out over it, but I do like doing it. So this year, we will need to select a delegate. I would love to pass it off to someone who has not had the opportunity to do it. And so if I have volunteers, I could take a volunteer. I will say that if we don't have a volunteer, Leanne has offered to do it, even though she's not here tonight. She did send me an email and let me know that if we didn't have interested parties that she would, that she would do it. You would be interested? Anyone else?
It brings you so much joy. I wouldn't want to take that away from you.
I will say, I I would be happy to do it a third time. But I do think it's a good learning experience for someone else to to take it on. So with that, I will make a motion to approve Shannon Lindstrom as our delegate to the 2021 MSBA Delegate Assembly.
Second.
Discussion? Okay.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
And Ms. Bertulia?
Yes.
Congratulations. You're going to have a ball. Agenda item 8.5 are our appointments this evening.
All right. So I'm going to share with you a little bit about our our new staff appointments. For your consideration, the first is a middle school student support and content area teacher. John La Perrier has been chosen to fill this position created by a realignment. He received his Bachelor of Bachelor of Arts degree in history from the University of Maryland, obtained his Masters of International Relations at Troy State University, and both his Masters of Educational Leadership and a Certificate of Advanced Graduate Study from New England College in New Hampshire. He's been an eighth-grade history teacher, sixth-grade classroom teacher, and assistant principal, and most recently, principal of Gardner Regional Middle School. Next up is our middle school behavioral specialist. Shannon O'Brien has been selected to fill this position created by a non-renewal. Ms. O'Brien earned her Bachelor of Arts degree in psychology from South Virginia University and Masters of Science in Educational Psychology from USM. She's been a behavioral specialist for both Bitterford Schools and Portland Public Schools, and most recently, a behavioral analyst with Spring Harbor Harbor Hospital. Ms. O'Brien will be right, sorry, eight-corner school physician, eight-corner school physical education teacher. Alicia Nemec has been nominated to fill this position created by retirement. She received her Bachelor of Science degree in physical education from University of Maine in Presque Isle, has been a PE teacher in Westbrook Schools, Wayne Fleet School, and Moore Street School in Freeport. Our middle school academic center teacher, Lisa Faris, has been chosen to fill this position created by a realignment. She obtained her Bachelor of Science degree in human development and elementary education from St. Joe's, St. Joseph's College, and her Masters in Education from Northeastern University. She's been an eighth-grade English teacher, an eighth-grade civics teacher, and a sixth and seventh-grade composition teacher in middle schools in Massachusetts since 2006. Our middle school Spanish teacher, Sarah Greer, has been selected to fill this position created by resignation. Ms. Greer received her Bachelor of Arts degree in Spanish from Michigan State University, anticipates completing her Masters of Secondary Education from the University of Michigan this month. She completed her student teaching in Michigan where she taught Spanish to high school students, and she's also been a language instructor in both China and Taiwan. Then Jennifer Bishop, a middle school library media specialist. Mrs. Bishop has earned her Bachelor of Science degree in accounting and economics from West Virginia Wesleyan College, and her Masters of Library Science from the University of North Texas. She's been with Saco Schools since 2008 as a library media specialist, a teacher in digital citizenship and intro to coding, and also as the Assistant Director of Information Technology. For our K to 2 technology instructional coach, Kelsey O'Neal, received her Bachelor's Degree in Elementary Education from the University of Maine and her Master's Degree in Educational Leadership from USM. She's been a classroom teacher for students in grades one and three for nine years. Our halftime middle school health and physical education teacher, Julie Carrigan Torre has been earned her Bachelor of Science degree in physical education from Miami University in Oxford, Ohio. She has worked in several school districts, including Ohio, Virginia, and Washington DC. She's been a PE teacher, a coach, an associate athletic director, as well as an athletic director. And our Wentworth School Classroom Teacher, a one-year position, Rhonda Gaguer, Gaguer, has been chosen to fill this one-year position. She received her Bachelor of Science degree in physical education from the University of Maine in Presque, am I reading this thing? That's not right. Never mind. Scratch that. Degree in Biology from the University of Southern Maine. She was a seventh-grade math and science teacher in Lisbon for three years, and most recently was a special education ed tech three at the middle school. And that is our appointments for this evening.
Excellent. So I have a move, a motion to approve the appointments as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, I think we're ready to vote.
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
Ms. Bertulia?
Yes.
Excellent. That's unanimous. Agenda item 9.0 is adjournment. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Discussion?
Mrs. Giftis?
Yes.
Dr. Gill?
Yes.
Ms. Layton?
Yes.
Mrs. Lindstrom?
Yes.
Mrs. Seither?
Yes.
Mrs. Turner?
Yes.
Ms. Giftis?
Yes.
And Ms. Bertulia?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you, everyone. Enjoy your evening.
Good night, guys.